Have a conversation with an consultant, we're getting prices right now. And when we look at the pricing, then we can decide there's something we're gonna have to do. Some of the things that we, historical documents, historical budgets, when you look at the price figure to convert those to ADA compliant, you may decide that we're gonna start from time certain and move forward, but not go back historically.
Yeah, you could have planned this as well.
Any other questions on that? And then the second is the resolutions for, I believe it's the SRF funding. So Tony has asked me to pass these out, and I believe we have three, three different resolutions. And essentially, these are to approve loans that you've already received, correct?
Comply with.
Yes.
And where these come from, and this is agenda item number two. I'd like to move forward, but originally, we did the same thing, legal opinion, resolution, and application document for the initial loan, we started breaking it up. Instead of doing it one time, the FDEP would like resolutions, legal opinions, and for the facilities plan that is underway now for the Phase Two fourteen lakes, the actual application. Funding's been approved there, so these documents just need to be executed, submitted to the.
We have a resolution number, these are twenty eighteen dash, do we do them as one, two, three, ten, eight, eleven, twelve? What's the numbers?
Tony said to number as appropriate, so I believe what he meant by that is he's not sure where you all left off, or?
And we'll just have to get Marilyn and ask her where the numbers leave on it.
So then the motion will be to authorize approval of the resolution on the construction loan of SW thirty six oh four oh, SW thirty six oh four one, and SW thirty six oh forty four?
Yes, sir. And that's all listed out on the agenda item number two.
That's my motion.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Swirney, the planning loan, we don't have an amount for that one?
So the planning one is one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and some odd cents. One sixteen nine eighty has been approved.
And that's for what?
And that's for the facilities plan, it's required to get funding for Phase Two, the next fourteen lakes, and Tetra Tech's working on that, and has been for several months.
A student, so.
Yes, sir.
We had voted to hold up on those things for those weeks, and we didn't re-vote.
Well, this is the planning portion.
Planning portion.
Right, and all it is is the application they want for that money, and you would have to go back to the construction order to approve that.
Motion to approve.
You're doing all of them at one time?
Yeah. Yeah, just do all of them.
We've got a motion in the second, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And if I may, on that agenda item number two, I started out and just did a sheet with eight million dollars, went down to the design loan, and took out the construction, and then also projected what will be coming up in the next couple of months with the six lakes remaining.
Where are you? We're a little lost.
Should be the second page.
We don't have that page.
We don't have that.
That's why I was asking.
I'll make a copy of it. I'll make a copy of it, but it does show.
So you have a cash flow now?
And I just did a spin around and projected the lakes out, and when you were asking about, sure, you were asking about Mr. Tingle. Because when I went down with the six lakes, we're getting ready to bid out now with the projected based on linear foot costs recently. And originally, a million, we'll still have one point one million remaining.
Does that include engineering fees?
Yes.
Any, what? Inspection?
Not for the remaining, no, I do have that on there, because we have construction management, construction inspection, grant management.
So that we've cut these costs significantly then on a per foot price for Lake Bank?
Yeah, the linear foot cost is down dramatically.
Do we have a vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
We did. All right, Mr. Engineer. Finally.
For the record, Danny Nelson, Tetra Tech. So you've got a couple of items on there, the first is our status update. I can go item by item, but I do wanna highlight a couple of them. The storage facility, we actually have a task authorization on there, so that's basically on hold until we, the decision's made as to how we deal with hydrant. Everything else is done on that, the stormwater permit's been submitted, I believe it hasn't been issued, we're anticipating it any time. But in order to move forward with the development order, we have to issue the hydrant, so I think we've exhausted, I think Chris has even reached out to the South Trail, I think we've exhausted, you know, not putting hydrant there, so we're gonna move forward with the project.
Of course, we have hydrant, definitely.
I think it had to be within five hundred feet.
Okay, because I went over today to Pelican and looked at their facility, they've got a storage facility over there, and I'd say I'd be stretching it, that they have a fire hydrant at five hundred feet.
Yeah, but, you know, what existed then doesn't mean they're gonna allow it, you know? I mean, you can make the argument as to why it's even necessary, but I think, you know, the argument they'll make is vehicles and fuel, they want a hydrant there.
Well, I have real questions about throwing water on some of those fires that could possibly occur out there. Where do you wanna do that?
Mrs. Swirney?
Okay, I asked Mr. Ringright, I hope I said that correctly.
Ringright?
Yeah. Last time he was here, that he said they got a letter from the, about the fire hydrant, and I asked for a copy of that letter. And I do not see it in my book, so I would appreciate.
Yeah, okay, I don't think the letter is actually from the South Trail, it's actually part of the development order review, so.
Okay, because I like to see when things like that occur in writing, it's just.
Sure, it should be at the district office, but I can.
Okay, thank you. And the fire hydrant that you would connect to, because Mr. Hall was showing me the fire hydrants that are out there.
Okay.
Would be the one, yeah, down this way?
I think the closest line that we know for sure is basically straight over here, about closer to the, or it'd be the west end of the first soccer field.
Okay, because there are a couple down here?
Yeah, we don't know, well, one, they're on, they're on, they're at the plant side, and we don't know the size of that line. That's what we talked about in past meetings, we kinda think we've kind of exhausted that. Plus, I don't believe they're a whole lot closer to where we're going, and we don't know anything about what's there, we can't find any ass builds on them, so we're guessing it's a six inch line, we need to connect them up here.
Okay, because when you were showing me where they were, he said they're probably, you know, if you can negotiate, you would probably be able to connect there, and they're a lot closer, but you don't know the size of them.
We brought that before the board in the past, and I think that's been exhausted, I mean, if the board wants to have some investigative work done, that can certainly be done, whether that's, you have to negotiate with the county and dig that up, because we can't find any ass build information on what's there.
What's the rough cost of this water line going to be?
I'm gonna guess about seventy or eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
This is projects getting quite expensive.
If we had estimated the storage facility to be what, two hundred?
I don't know.
One eighty.
One twenty.
They want eighty.
It started a hundred, but it's grown quite significantly, is what it is.
So we're up to around maybe two fifty?
I'm gonna guess the, I'm gonna guess the facility's even more than that, because I think when the last estimate was done, it was still, you know, a basic facility. We've had, you know, it's got asphalt completely around it, automated gates, lighting all around, landscaping, more significant.
That's where I'm going, is this what we wanna do?
I'd like to ask Mr. Hall about the fire hydrants that are there, if he knows anything about the size of them.
Not the ones for the dogs.
No, the dogs, we never found them.
Kenny Hall, utility manager, oh, we have three at, three at the wastewater plant, one next to it, and then one here. That is the closest fire hydrant is the center one that, yes.
But what are they connected to, by size?
That is a ten inch line?
We know that for sure.
That is a ten inch line.
We know that.
Yes.
So would that be a closer point to tie into?
On the original one, it was the center of fire hydrant was the closest one. Now, what we found out was that line goes across the street and comes beyond the other side of Griffin, but whether that was close or not, I didn't know, I just turned it over to you.
I think Bill brings up good points, we're getting up to around three hundred thousand dollars, is this gonna cost Bill?
So let's talk about that for a second. So we're projecting anywhere from eighty to a hundred slots, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just, let's just use eighty. And let's say we're gonna charge a low, I mean, sixty dollars a month, so sixty times twelve, that's about seven twenty annually for one spot, times eighty spots, that is?
Fifty seven.
It's about fifty, fifty seven, sixty, sixty K, and that's at the low. And I think sixty is probably low, it's, I think going right now is probably over a hundred bucks for that, so we just need to think about, originally, when we were, when this came forward, and.
It grew in scope.
We were talking two to three years ROI, now we're looking at five to six years.
Yeah, so, and I think we need to weigh out resident benefit, district benefit, which is freeing up the space, and also it being a potential revenue generator, then we've gotta work these numbers in as far as the charges, to see when our break even point is, and if we've got to scale back on some of the items and have a phased approach.
Well, the point I was making, we're gonna be authorizing doing additional work to imply that we're going down that road. I'd hate to take and spend fifteen, twenty thousand dollars on engineering work only to decide we're not gonna build it.
I mean, I still think it's a good idea.
Well, my other point was on this, is that that's a piece of land that if we don't, you know, water, get off the pot, Timber Creek's gonna build over there, and then they're gonna tell us what we have to do. And we need, if we're gonna do this, we need to do it quick before they come in.
I mean, the hydrant really will wrench in this whole thing. I mean, it delayed us eight months at least, probably so.
About six.
And almost doubling our, almost doubling our calls, not quite, but.
Mr. Brand had a comment on it, go ahead, Mike.
If I could, please, Jim Brandham, in part, the vehicles, RVs, and boats that are gonna be stored in this facility, are they gonna be required to remove gasoline and diesel from their fuel tanks?
Probably not.
If, if, if not, then you don't want water on top of a fire that's, that has diesel and gasoline, you want foam. So are you gonna install the proper facilities to fight a diesel and a gasoline fire? Water's the last thing you wanna put on that kind of fire.
It's a great comment, but.
That's not the requirement.
You need, you need to do what's right.
The development, the development order also is kind of in limbo, and I know that they'll give you an extension, and extension, and extension, and extension. Where are we then?
Well, we're, it's still in limbo phase right now, so it, but if you had to resubmit for it, Tyler said it was like a hundred dollar, you know, fee, so it's, it's sitting there in limbo, they understand the issue that we're dealing with. This was a South Trail comment, that was part of that BO process.
Oh, okay, thank you. Do we still have a waiting list for it, and how much are we charging now still?
I don't know, but it's below market, I know that.
So if we went up to seventy five dollars?
The goal rate for me, what, and there's, if all, I have to look at the plan again to see if all the spaces are equal, and I don't think they are, I think there's some larger spaces, so the range would be probably sixty to a hundred dollars on average. So to me, the threshold is gonna be between sixty and about a hundred twenty thousand dollars in revenue annually. And that's just, you know, giving you some averages. So it's gonna either be potentially, let's say, a four to six year break even point. And I think we can work on that a little bit, but, but then after, you know, that four, five, or six years, then it becomes a hundred percent revenue generating, which we go from fifteen thousand that we, that revenue we generate here, to potentially sixty, seventy, over a hundred K, so we have a hard time generating revenue, so for me, that's, I still, I would still move forward with it.
And we need this property over here with the modules.
Well, and to do other things with it.
Yeah.
It's an investment.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Has anybody looked at the cost of insurance of having all of those specialty vehicles down there back to back?
They're required to have their own insurance.
The insurance is on the owner of the vehicles that are.
We have no liability. Or limited liability.
Park it your own risk.
We require, even here today, we require every store to have insurance covered on what they, what they source. So if a hurricane comes through and wipes them all away, we have, I don't know if I'd say no liability, but limited liability.
But if my vehicle catches fire, gasoline, diesel, propane, whatever, it burns up yours, you're not gonna try and come back at me, really? Or come back in another.
I would come to you, I wouldn't come to the district.
They're not gonna come back, they're not gonna try and come to the board?
Or they have all that weed pocket?
That's, that's, I think it's in the contract, I mean, we, we, we have to look at our contracts to make sure that we have liability covered. Good point. I'm sure, that's why we picked Tony.
Even when you rent a storage space and you put things inside of a building, you're required to have renters' insurance policy. It's not, you aren't gonna say, well, your building burned down, you owe me so much money.
Yeah, but you're not, you're storing down looms, but diesel and propane.
People store everything. So?
So we have a proposal to do engineering design on the extension of a water line, is that where we're at?
Yes. That's what's on page forty two of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it, for discussion.
Okay, and that's the same, you have questions?
I do, I still have some more questions. Okay, so now that we know that is a ten inch pipe, is there any way to connect to that, or do we have to go back out, so just?
If you wanna connect to that, one, you'd need an agreement to, I would assume that there's no easement there, I don't know. If there is, you'd need legal ability to do that, we don't know where that line is at, so that line would have to be located. So I don't know if somebody's gonna locate the line, that's what we have, brought that back before the board previously as to, we were unable to find any ass builds on it, so if somebody knows where that line is, and we can start, what we have to do is survey it, so we can then lay it out on plans, on plans to design it and permit it, so.
We've got a camera now, we can check exactly where it is.
Good for what?
Good luck on that pressure pipe.
Can the ten inch line come out onto property we own?
It comes out across Gateway, Gateway, or Griffin Drive, or Soccer Drive right here, and goes, it stubbed out, right there, it goes down to a two inch, and runs that, the dog park fire hydrants, and then the restroom.
So the point of connection is out here at Griffin Drive, correct?
Yes.
No.
No, 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 it runs, it runs down along this side.
We're talking about the same thing, you're, I think you were talking about in the wastewater plant, what we're talking about is, your line runs, I think where it ends is the ten inch, or that ten inch line is basically parallel with where my arm is.
That's where it stops.
And then it's two inch going down to the dog park.
So the question is, we don't know where the ten converts to a two?
We know about where that, I was, I was under the impression, we were talking about back at, Mrs. Swirney was talking about back at the wastewater plant, and that's what we, we don't know anything, I don't know anything about.
My question about the line back at the wastewater plant is, does it come onto our property, or do we just go out and dig it up?
Yeah, it comes, it comes in and goes, it goes into the plant, and then goes, goes across, and it goes around. That is what the hydrants are on. We would have to tie in in front of that.
Wherever that point is at, if it can be identified, and we can pick it up.
He said they don't know where it is, well, it could be on our property, but we don't know where it is.
So if, wherever that point's identified, we'll survey it from there.
And there's no other way?
I don't know any other way of doing it. I don't know any other way of finding it. Set of ass builds would help.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we can't find.
So we know it's out there somewhere on our property?
I can't even get a show.
We have, we have a pretty good idea of where, at least where I think the ten is, so if Kenny's point where he believes it is, is closer, we can certainly start from there, and that saves you some dollars, obviously.
Yeah, we have, we are able to see that ten inch, and where it goes across, I have, we had the plans on that. As far as Lee County, when it goes into that plant, they have the plans on where, what exactly, I guess I'm lost here.
That ten inch that goes to Lee County, is any of it on our road right away?
Yes. And where it comes in, it splits, and it stubs out, and goes across the street, it's.
Why can't we tie it right there?
Yeah, if that, if we know where that's at, and we can pick up the survey right there.
Okay. Let's find, Kenny, go find that thing.
Let's go dig it up. Just go dig it up.
You have, you have a week.
Well, it goes to a ten inch, and then it goes down to a two inch, and that's where that water line runs down to that bathroom.
Get your plumber's knife and go pick it up.
We need a map that shows us, the ten that you're talking about is not the ten she's talking about, I'm getting.
They're both the same, though.
They're the same one.
It's the same, you have one that goes into the plant, and one wraps around, and then we have ours that goes across the street.
Okay, my point is the one that wraps around the plant, where it leaves our property, it goes into their property. Can we not pick it up and tap right there?
Well, I think that Kenny's saying that he knows where it crosses over to Lee County. So he knows where that location is, we can simply pick it up from there survey wise, and go in.
That's what.
And cheap.
And cheap?
Yeah, it's probably a couple hundred, five hundred yards, you know, closer than where.
Let's do that. Let's do that.
Save you twenty grand.
We don't know where it's at, but let's do it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Um, so there are just a couple other items to go over on the, the status. Hydraulic modeling, we actually finished the actual modeling effort, and have identified some deficiencies. I have a draft memo that was given to me today, so we'll be looking at that, bringing it up and getting it to staff next week.
So a proposal to do the hydraulic modeling?
Well, the proposal, we've already been doing the hydraulic, this is not for the stormwater.
Yeah, please, make yourself clear, Danny. Which project? Hydraulic modeling for what?
It's, the task authorization is called hydraulic modeling, for water, oh, sorry, for irrigation and wastewater. The facilities plan, and Chris had talked about that, and then we're still talking about that, as well as the lake bank for the next phase, which has been designed, so the facilities plan, as Chris had mentioned, we actually got the surveying, it's been complete for a while, I got the drawings over to Chris. We're moving forward with the facilities plan, the goal there is, the public hearing is in February, so we'll be working on completing that this fall, getting it before the board, and it'll, it'll go through approval at this level, and then it'll get up to DEP, and it'll get on their February agenda.
You've got eighteen on their dandies, I mean nineteen?
Well, this, those are the dates that we, we've already contracted to do it, and the reason why we weren't able to meet that was the surveying took a lot longer than what was anticipated.
So you're talking about a public hearing February nineteenth?
February nineteenth, so if you look at that bottom item, the February nineteenth is what we have as the, as the DEP public hearing. And to getting to Mr. Banks' comment earlier about some costs, and Chris had already mentioned it, I believe the current set of plans has about twenty five to thirty percent reduction in the amount of the armor max.
From the revised, or from the original?
From the, from the previous design that we had had, so.
So we already went through one, reduction of armor max, including coconut matting, or alternate solutions. So you've got, you've gone twenty five percent below that one?
Well, no, it, what is, what is currently out there is the design that was put out the bid previously, so that design was twenty five to thirty percent less than what the original design was, and we'll look at it again.
Do we feel there's still some meat on that, or some, still fat on that?
There's not a lot, but we'll, you know, we'll look at it again, we'll look at it with staff, and see what we can do. But even with that reduction, it's cut down the cost significantly. And as we've mentioned, is, you know, these, the first round were obviously the worst, and that was, I think, one hundred percent on the residential side. This round is less severe, and as we go on, it'll get even, even less and less, and I think it'll get to the point where we're doing more spot improvements than it is doing a full eight. The fifth amended engineer's report, we plan to bring that back to the next meeting, we've gone to all staff revisions, we have a draft, or a final, ready to present to the board, so we're, we'll bring that back before you, and that should work towards, ultimately towards closeout of bonds for Pelican Reserve. And the last one I wanted to point out on here was the Pelican striping. We actually have the draft submitted to staff today, and Pelican Reserve, finally, I'm quite lenient on that, but we have been working with Lee County's contractors to verify pricing using the piggybacking, and that will go through also city permitting, so we should, within the next, within the, probably not by the next board meeting, but board meeting after that, we should have permit in hand and, you know, contract on board. So those are basically what I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No, I think, or who's, who's breaking the presentation of the, any of? Or is that?
That's the next item on.
That's the next item on.
That's the next item, and before we get there, I've been, there's a request for us to take a break, so five minute break. Okay, again, item five A is acceptance of auditing services proposal.
Take a motion to approve the recommendation of the auditing committee to authorize Stephen to proceed with a revised scope of work to the five respective auditing firms.
I'll second.
Now, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hold me a minute, I'm sorry.
Who had, Ed Baker motioned and Doug seconded.
Back for me, thank you.
Now we've got acceptance of the updated contract for district engineer. Sorry, Danny.
The only thing is.
I'm a yo-yo.
Tony had me bring clean versions, and then other, I guess, what he thought were more clear markup versions, and do you, do you all want these?
Yeah, of course.
Everybody has.
The thing is, we don't have the exhibits.
The exhibits are in the, the.
They're in the pile.
It's right under five D.
Oh, it's in the, I'll read it, I'll read it.
Okay, this is clear. Oh, yes, Mr. Graham brought it up before, but I did bring it up to attorney court peers about the penalties for not doing things, and for a time of, timestamp of things to be done, that a date would be required. I did not see that in the contract.
It is in the contract, where it is, is it's on page four fourteen, it's under article two, method of authorization, and the way that it's gonna be done is through task authorizations. So the language in here says, including early delayed delivery completion provisions, and special provisions or conditions specific to the service or project being authorized. So the intent of that is your penalties, or whatever, you know, it is that you wanna include in there would actually be in the specific task authorization.
And another question?
Certainly.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, I have it marked, I don't know. Page is page sixty one in the agenda book. Okay, scope of services, article one, it's in the agenda book, I don't know if it's sixty one, okay, thank you. And it says there, the man engineer will provide general engineering services as approved or directed by the Board of Supervisors. Now, that is all the Board of Supervisors, or is it just an individual supervisor, if that covers that? I just wanna make sure exactly.
Meaning, do they, do they have to act collectively, or can they act individually?
Right.
I can't, I don't know, you can ask Tony.
The task has to come through the board.
Right, but I mean, if somebody asks them to do something. Right, but I mean, if somebody asks them to do something, what I'm asking is that's what it says. It has to be, um, their services have to be approved or directed by the board. So that would be a task that we're asking them to do. Right?
Well, if I can interpret as a, as an engineer, not an attorney, what Mr. Tingle is referring to are task authorizations. That's referring to general engineering services. It means that the board of supervisors.
So that means the whole board would have to do something.
That's the way I read it.
That's, okay. I, I just needed an interpretation that I would understand so that no, like, I can't personally call you and say, I want you to do something.
That's the way I read it.
That's, I just, thank you. I clarify.
But I don't think you could do that on any contract. I, I don't think that would be authorized at all.
But I just wanted that, that's for clarified. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that's exactly what I, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Concerns?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a question regarding rates?
That's my first one.
You did have, we had two estimate here.
Yeah, we'll take the low one.
Take the low one. The lower would be using a multiplier, but I believe.
This is standard choice of whether we go cost plus fee or the premium rate?
Well, I mean, I'm looking at it as, as either using a standard rate schedule or using a multiplier that's based on our property burden rate. And the, what I was explaining in the memo, I should have, I think it's in there, is that, and, and, Mr. Y, I'm sure you're very familiar with these and, you know, from my experience, both are used probably more common as a standard rate schedule. The, the problem with the standard rate schedule is for, and as I was explaining in the memo, it's taking a, a general classification of, let's say, engineer one. And I believe our engineer one is a rate of eighty-five. We may have a hundred, we may have two hundred individuals that are in it. Maybe we may have two or three that may be working on Gateway. And they don't make the same, you know, there are, there's been different points in their career. For different reasons, they make different salaries, which means that that results in a different profit margin on those individuals. So with this, with the set multiplier, regardless of the individual, you would be paying based on their role. So it would be a set profit.
Is your federal lottery rate then?
That's our current federal lottery. Our, and we're, our fiscal year ends, it's the same as, as yours, it's September thirtieth.
And then it changes.
And then it changes. So we.
Your reception is correct. I, I, my experience has been that's the only way to go.
What's staff's recommendation?
We recommend it because of projected savings using that rate and makes it simpler to go with the cost plus multiplier.
Danny, who is the principal in charge?
And, well, and that would, that, that would depend on, we have multiple principals in the firm. So it would depend on the project. I, I doubt that an actual principal in charge would, you know, would charge to your project.
Could you say that in a letter, please?
I doubt an actual principal would charge to your, to your project. But I technically, I technically classify as a principal in charge. To answer your question. The majority of the folks that, that, that would charge to your project would be, you know, engineer one, engineer two, engineer three. Again, if you went with the multiplier, it's kind of irrelevant what that classification would be, how you pay on the roll. That makes sense.
I was just looking at the rates in one of the TPA firms proposals. Hit of the, one of, one of the firms principals is two hundred and twenty-five dollars. It was a three forty point.
And, and, and we quite often have clients that tell us to take those, you know, rates out. I'm just saying, this is our standard rate schedule. I don't think a principal is ever charged in nearly ten years that we've done work for Gateway that a principal is, is ever charged. And I wouldn't propose a three hundred and forty, you know, rate.
And we'd be able to golf at that when it came up on the.
Yeah, yeah. Chris would catch up pretty quickly.
And just for, for those listening in, there was questions around holding our engineers accountable, accountable and performance based. Now, we, we talked about different types of performance based incentives and it's really difficult. And it's something that I think we're, you know, maybe looking at, you know, in the future. But I know that Chris and Danny have sat down and had a lot of conversations around driving partnership and efficiencies and all those types of things. But I did want to just call out that we do have a termination for convenience in this contract. So at any time, if, if we determine we were unsatisfied for any reason, we can terminate the contract. So from a resident's perspective, if we don't feel like, you know, there's confidence in, in our engineer, we can terminate and walk away at any time. Just thought I would call that out.
So with that idea, can I get the motion maker to, oh, sorry, Mrs. Flaherty, one more question. What happened? Sorry. I have my phone where I wrote them all down. Okay. The task report that you do now, will you continue to do that?
Yes, and that I believe is, is written in your, in, in the actual contract.
I mean, this is all legal stuff.
And some of the stuff, Kathy, that actually will be contracted and worked out within staff and the engineer, some of the managed routines and, and how they're going to report out. Because I'd love to see, you know, a project report, a holistic project report on a regular basis in conjunction with the task authorization, whether it's managed by Tetra Tech. I probably might have a co-op between staff and Tetra Tech to show where we're at with every project. Are we on time? Are we on schedule? What are the risks, you know, budget wise? And let's tighten it up a little bit.
Did, did you ask where that was?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not sure.
It's in section B. If you look at page three of fourteen, which is page sixty-three, C, or I guess it's in D, section B, the last sentence. Does the project manager shall provide the district with monthly written staff reports as to all authorized projects and task authorizations.
You said page sixty-three?
On, on this.
Page three of fourteen.
Three of fourteen.
Oh, on the one, okay.
The one in the green versus draft.
Okay, so it's not, okay.
It's also in the book.
But I didn't have the other in there. That's. Okay, thank you.
Jim, Jim Brand brought up earlier and I asked, and I almost forgot, the issue of delineating when services are needed. And this has been an age old issue here. And what, what I had is in the past, our contracts have indicated that our district manager would notify them and let them know to be here. That, that can create all kinds of issues. Our problems are, as, as we find out, it's like every meeting we have, whether it's once a month, first meeting or the second meeting, somebody comes in, I've got to have this to get it to E B C, which necessitates the engineer to be here at every meeting. Only way I can get around to that is that we have all engineering work done at one call meeting, period. And the only exception would be in the case of the district manager, he calls and blows the whistle as to whether they come to the second meeting for a, an emergency.
And we, we talked about that when we were going over the contract in the meetings, was that we can limit it to one meeting a month? That was exactly what we talked about.
I'm just saying, there's many things we have going. There isn't hardly a meeting that goes by. And I know what will happen the first time that we don't have them here. Why am I waiting thirty more days?
If I don't wait every, every meeting?
I don't have a problem with having a cost front bill.
I understand that, but we are spending big money here.
I, I, I agree.
If we have to wait another fifteen days.
Engineering, six percent of the cost of the total project is tailway at the dock. I agree with you.
It also is a matter of if they actually have something to bring before the board for authorization or an update. They may not have everything, something at every meeting. So they were going to do better job helping us limit how much they actually have to be at.
But why can't we experiment with that for say a sixty, ninety day period, see what happens and then make a decision like every other board has done in the past? Send to hell with that and go back to that, be here every.
Yeah.
You promised, you promised not to ask, to talk about anything regarding engineering.
I'm sorry. You have your mouth moving, but I don't hear it.
Well, that's, that's the exact point I was going to make is, I, I love the idea of having, you know, engineers here once a month. But that's going to require some restraint on our side and, and management routines from Chris. He's only going to put items on the agenda, you know, that one meeting a month. And the second meeting is maybe a workshop and presentations and stuff. But we have to make sure that we don't pull up engineering related topics.
Many have tried this and it's tough.
It is tough.
I mean, to me, I, I would much rather have our engineer here. But if we're going to make a change, we have to be committed to it.
Right. And we may end up deciding that we can't do that.
It's worth a try.
But we can spring him early. We can have him be the first person that presents and play him out the door.
Makes a lot of sense.
So you only pay for one hour?
Yeah.
Just to the five.
Mrs. Flaherty, yes.
I'll vote on the phone. We got to contact him before we contact him on the phone. He's still.
Okay, I just, do your thing.